Yalimahadz, everybody. And welcome to tonight's session. We are delighted to have our vice doctor Hassem with us once again. Today is July twenty first, two thousand and twenty, and is a special session on questions and answers. I would like to begin by thanking doctor Hassem for his untiring efforts and time commitment to hold these lectures with us, the religions, week after week. Thank you, doctor Hassem. We will start with Ginan Katsida. Following this, doctor Hassem will deliver a point of dialogue for a few minutes with everyone before we begin the question and answer session. Bismillah, Shirinba.
Thank you, Shirinba, for that lovely two parts of Ginans. As I always like to say to everyone, Ginans are full of wisdom. And let me share with you one wisdom today. Did you know that Ginans that are of supplications, like the one that was recited right now, our peers, they were geniuses in teaching us how we should conduct ourselves and what kind of ethics we should have in front of the holy Imam? So our peers, out of their love and affection, they have shown us, they have indicated to us, they have taught us how we should present ourselves in front of the Imam and how we should supplicate the Imam in such a way that Maula would just grant us all our wishes and all our desire. And I think you understand the wisdom behind that. It has to do, how do you approach the supreme being? How do you approach Maula? And what language do you use? In which manner do you express that language? And these teachings of supplications in our holy Ginans are amazing because they open up the path of that wisdom and it teaches us how to be humble and submitted and accepted and be presented in front of the holy Imam. And as you know, when we are in Jamaat Kana, we are always in front of our beloved Imam. In fact, we are always in front of him, regardless of where we are, because that is a promise our beloved Imam has made us. I always urge everyone, in every way, to spend a little time always to try to get this wisdom from whichever parts of the Ginans so that that wisdom helps to purify our mind. It helps to bring more light of the soul and the intellect into our being. Because Ginan is loaded and charged with Nuh. And that's what happens when we reflect on that knowledge. You know, every time we have a questions and answer session like today, and before that questions are asked, I like to say a few words and we call that points of dialogue. And just to give it a title as to what it is. So today's point of dialogue is a reflection that all of you should do, all of us should do, because it is an amazing message that Maulana Haziman gave on December thirteenth, two thousand and three, in Dubai. And that whole Farman of the Imam, it is so amazing, like all other holy Farmans. But this one here has something that is really something to think about and something for us to ponder about, something to discover, something to participate into and something to share some reflection on. What did our beloved Imam say? Please say. Our beloved Imam says, "My Jamaat would know that during the past decades, much time and effort has been taken to reconstitute our knowledge of our own history." Knowledge which has been buried by time, which has sometime been buried on purpose by others, but which is essential, that we should reconstitute and use in order to inform ourselves as to the practices and beliefs and the ethics of the past within the Jamaat. The guidance that was given by the Imams of the time and to inform ourselves as to better project into the future a number of important decisions, unquote. This reflection, this Farman of the Imam in Dubai is truly magnificent. Because you can see here, what our beloved Imam is saying, is saying that we are reconstituting our knowledge, step by step. At many times, this knowledge has been buried by others in purpose. And bring back the knowledge, the guidance rather, of the Imams of the times, meaning of the past, and put them into the context of the knowledge and practice of our faith. So I am hoping that in many of the things that I'm sharing with everyone who participates in these sessions, contributes to these particular objectives in the Farmans, that we are able to bring things that is of the past. And you can see how strongly the Imam says that this is the knowledge that was then, but bring it today. What was the guidance of the Imams of the time then? So in reviewing that, in hopefully sharing that, we can add to our understanding of the practice of our tarika. And there are many other things along the same lines that our beloved Imam has shared that we need to remind ourselves. And as you can see, this Farman was made in two thousand and three, seventeen years ago. And a lot of progress has been made since then in many different avenues. And much remains to be brought forward. So I hope the sum of the elements, in my humble opinion and understanding, that can be brought to bear into this understanding would be good. And that means sometimes looking at earlier teachings of our holy Imams, earlier Farmans of our holy Imams. And looking at those Farmans, looking at what guidance the holy Imam gave at that time. They are a, it's an ocean. It's an ocean of pearls, diamonds, rubies, gold, treasures. You cannot imagine. Because that is the nature of our tarika, to dig into the intellect and bring the Ba'tin into our hearts. And that's what we are seeking in terms of our knowledge. Hopefully during this session of question and answer, we might have an example or two. So let me now pass it back to the host and begin with the first question.
Yalimahadz, doctor Hassem.
Maula Yalimahadz, thank you.
So what I've done for today's session is tried to group certain questions together so that there's a flow to the questions. So the first part of the questions that I'm going to pose to you are related to Iman and the Thon. So the first question is, "Does it mean that non-Ismailis are not faithful since they do not have Iman?"
Not at all, not at all. I presume the question, and the one who asked if he or she is there, you can correct me if my understanding is not correct. But because the question said, it's a presumption to think that because they don't have Iman, they don't have faith or they are not faithful. First comment is this, that remember, I always said this in hopefully all my presentations. And that is, that when I respond or when I am sharing this information, it is strictly in the context of our own practice, our own tarika. And based on the teachings of our beloved Imam, our holy kids, the Holy Prophet, the Holy Quran, and those authorized in our tarika by the Imam, I'm talking about the Da'ees who have had that authority by the Imam to teach the Jamaat and to share with the Jamaat the interpretation of the faith given by the Imam through our holy kids and the Da'ees. That's my objective. And I've been very specific about this. And I will continue to be specific about this because it is so important to know that when we seek information about the practice of our faith, that it must come from the Imam of the time, no matter who disseminates it. But the link has to be the authority of the Imam. Without which, that information would not serve a purpose to us. Because that information of the faith is very specific to the enlightenment. The Imam likes the path of enlightenment. And the Imam takes us to spiritual understanding of our practice and the Ta'wil and Talim of the final revelations and all of that. So with that preface, which applies to all the questions, I hope, and my presentations, I keep saying it in different ways and so that, you know, we are clear that we are on the same page. In other words, it is within the framework of our own interpretation that I am speaking. So that's the first thing. Secondly, to answer the question, you know that it has been the teachings of all our Imams from the very beginning, that first, no one has the authority or the power to decide plus judgment on the faith of any other human being. The reason being, we just don't have the capacity to do so. It doesn't matter how advanced, how informed we are, we don't have the power, the authority to pass that judgment. That's number one. Number two, in our Ismaili faith, in the way we look at other faiths, and indeed, as it is in Islam, but I would say even more profoundly in our faith, every single religion that has come on the face of this planet, from an Islamic point of view, we believe they are part of Allah's revelation to mankind. Meaning, the source of revelation for all faiths according to Islam is one source. And that is Allah himself. I'm speaking in that general term. Now, let me make the connection. Remember what I keep saying to you? Based on Surah Nu, Allah is the Nuh of the heavens and the earth. So if Allah is Nuh and the Nuh is responsible and it's the source of all revelations that have ever come on the face of this planet through one hundred and twenty-four thousand prophets, then would the question arise to say, who stands where in terms of the faith? It does not arise. Because whether those religions of the past, they are part of what we call the hyperborean shamanism group of religion, whether they are part of the Aryan mythology's part of religion, or whether they are part of the Semitic monotheism within which Judaism, Christianity, and Islam are. All of them, absolutely all of them, and let me tell you this, all of them have a relationship with the Nuh. And by extension and by that logic, I can tell you without hesitation, there is not a single religion on the face of this planet that does not have, historically, I underline the word historically, a relationship with the Ismaili faith. Though in Islam, the understanding of Ahlul Kitab and other faiths are clearly expressed because the name of some twenty-eight or so prophets are mentioned by name in the Quran. And in the Quran also, it says, there are names that have not been mentioned. But all of them are prophets of God. And you may remember in my lecture on the Metacosmic Purpose of Creation, I explained to you that the part in the Quran that we recite in our Dua, where the Holy Prophet was asked to say that announce to humanity, tell humanity, disclose to humanity what was entrusted to you as a message. And what was the message? The message for humanity, not only the Arabs of the time, not only for the Muslims of the time. The message was the disclosure. The message was the announcement. The message was make it clear, who is the manifestation of that Nuh? And that was the holy Imamat of Maulana Murtaza Ali, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And that set a chain of Imamat to be manifested to humanity one after the other until today. And it will continue till the day of judgment and even after that. So if you are following my logic from this question, then I can tell you that based on the teachings of our beloved Imam, they are all faithful in the context in which they express their faith, their belief, their conviction providentially placed, providentially placed spiritually and psychologically, which is best for them in terms of their own psychological and spiritual growth. So, and just to conclude this part, remember what I just said. We have an intimate relationship with the Ahlul Kitab and all other faiths as far as Ismaili faith is concerned. I need to add this point, and that is, did you know our beloved Imam Sultan Mamacharay Salam, in one of the Farmans, he has mentioned, and I won't dwell into that Farman extensively today, but I'm giving you the point of connection. He says, "Did you know that our Ismaili Sapant Darah, meaning our Ismaili part of faith, has come into existence from before the existence of creation? So there was before creation known as Un Ad, and then when creation took place, it's called Ad, the beginning. And our beloved Imam confirms, it is from that point on, Ismaili faith has existed. I know this is a huge theological question. It's a huge metaphysical question. But however we may philosophize or understand it metaphysically, these are the teachings of our holy Imam about Ismaili faith. So let us not just historically go back to fifteen hundred years and say, well, you know, this is where we see a point of departure. It is not. And why is it not? It is not because the faith we call today Ismaili faith, Ishia, Imani, Ismaili Islam. This faith is the faith of the path of the Nuh. Now, look at the logic. If it is the path of the Nuh, then it is the Nuh that first created everything and brought mankind into existence. That being the case, then which religion do you think the Nuh brought into this universe at a time of creation? Next, total logic. If it is the Nuh that is responsible for the whole maintenance, sustenance, and creation of the whole universe, then that part of Nuh must have existed right from the beginning. And right from the beginning, that Nuh that has been manifest, one manifestation after another has continued, has continued. And it's a long, long history of the, call it, the history of divine manifestation, to put it simple. So there is our point. That's why we, in the Ismaili Sapant Darah, we follow the teachings of our beloved Imam and the conviction that any human being who has faked into their own faith indeed is a path that leads them to that, the reality which they believe and consume.
Excellent, sir. Well, there's a lot to learn from that. Thank you, doctor Hassem. The next question is, "What if someone is strong in Ibadah and their Iman is firm? What if they have no job or money coming in? How do they give the Thon? Will none of that bear any fruit? If someone has no financial income, what form of the Thon can they give?"
It's a very delicate question. It's a very emotional question. And I have to tell you, in utmost humility, I don't like to evade or not to answer questions. In a sense that if the answers are there and I'm, with Maula's blessing, I can find an answer, I would share that answer with you. And I'd like to express conviction when I share my answers because whoever is asking questions, you have a purpose behind it, which I don't always know, but I hear your question. So let me answer this perhaps in in different facets to accommodate it. First and foremost, I want to acknowledge that this question is a reality in many people's lives based on the circumstances of life that have put them there. So first and foremost, I'd like to tell you, whatever may be the circumstances of life in which you have, you find yourself into, including the one expressed into this question itself, the circumstances of life does not mean that we shy away from the principle and the duty and the responsibility that we have in the faith. We may have difficulty. We may have obstacles. We may have areas in life that we cannot deal with it immediately because the circumstances have brought us there. So what does that mean? And if you look at this question, you can see there are multiple pieces. But at the bottom of this question, it simply says, "I just can't give the Thon because I don't have an income. But I am faithful. I pray and I have conviction into my faith." So I say to you that in response to the question, that hopefully with Maula's grace, with Maula's blessings, with Maula's mercy, that this will not be a permanent situation in a human being's life. Why? Because we have an Imam of the time. And let me here, first of all, put into that context. And what I would like to do is to read before you some verses of the Quran so that you can see the context within which I am responding to you. So this is from Surah number two. And I'm reading you a few verses, beginning from verse one fifty-two. And it goes down from one fifty-two to about one fifty-seven. The Holy Quran says, therefore remember me, I will remember you. Give me thanks to me and reject me not. The next verse says, oh you believe, seek help in steadfastness and prayer. Lo, Allah is with the steadfast. Then verse 155 says, and surely, now this is very important verse in response to the question, okay? And surely we shall trial with something of fear and hunger and loss of wealth and lives and crops, but give glad tidings to the steadfast. Verse 156 says, who say when a misfortune strike at them? Lo, we are Allah's and lo unto him we are returning. This is the Ina Lillahi Wa Ina Elaihi Raji Wa. And then the last verse, 157 says, such are they on whom are blessings from their Lord and mercy. Such are the rightly guided. Each verse requires a detailed explanation. But let me summarize in a concise manner. It clearly says that you are going to be tested. There will be a test. Let me tell you from a broader context. There is not a single soul from the beginning of creation till when the souls were created, till today, that have not been tested by the Creator. If you are going to make it in the hereafter and achieve the ultimate degree of spiritual oneness, you are going to be tested. And these verses of the Quran are very clear. They will, it loss of wealth, loss of crops, loss of life. They will, you will be put into a situation of fear. It happens to every human being. No human being will ever say, I've never been tested. There may be degrees of testing, which I can talk to you a bit later. There can be such thing that there is a test, no questions about it. No body can evade the, evade the test, but the test is there. So based on these verses, it says, remember me and I will remember you. And offer thanks to me. Now, I am seeking, if Mola wills and with Mola's blessings, in humility, to try to answer that question honestly, sincerely, without deviating and without basically just being diplomatic about it. I cannot be diplomatic about it. This is too serious a question not to take it head on. So the thing is this. Think about this verse that Allah says. I answer the que, I answer your prayers. I answer your supplication. When you think of me, I will think of you and offer thanks to me. You know, the notion of gratitude is so amazingly important that we quite often forget it. Because many blessings are given to us in the assumption that we deserve them. We merit them or we say we work for them. Or we say those are the blessings that we enjoy in life and we take them for granted. There are all kinds of things around that. I don't want to go into those details. I simply want, want to say. In the Quran, there are many verses that says that man is indeed ungrateful. And when the human being is ungrateful, with that ungratefulness comes punishment. It's in the Quran. Don't, don't say that I'm saying this. I am no one to tell you that. I am simply relating to you. But because it's a question, I don't go into all the various salient point, which I will because I have a, I had a, a lecture in my midst about the notion of gratitude. But that will come a little bit later. But let me give you some of the punchline. The notion of gratitude, what is that? Did you see that it is connected with the notion of prayer? Do you know why? Our beloved fifth Imam, Imam Jafar Sadiq, Alaihissalam, and other Imams also, but as also expressed in the Quran. Did you know the prayer of gratitude? When you say, Shukran Billah, Walhamdulillah. When you say, Subhanallah, these are all prayers of gratitude. When you praise, when you praise the holy Imam and you say, Maulabapa, I thank you. Glory be to thee Maulabapa, Subhanallah. Praise be to thee Maulabapa, Alhamdulillah. And when we pray, when we say, Shukran Billah, Walhamdulillah, Subhanallah. However you want to express your praise, your glor, the glorification and the gratitude to our beloved Imam. Do you know what that is? That is the highest form of prayer you can offer. There is no higher form of prayer than gratitude. There is a magic, a magic that is built in this prayer of gratitude. And I'll explain to you in a second. So that's the first point. That's why it says, you know, be grateful to me. So I've, I mentioned about the test. I've mentioned about the prayer. But when it came to the test, it says, those who are steadfast. You know the meaning of steadfastness? Those who will not budge, who will stay firm on the path of Sirat al-Mustaqim, who will not be swayed, who will not be derailed because they have this difficulty. Meaning those who are steadfast will realize, I have a responsibility. In this case, in this particular case of the question, I have a responsibility of my Dasan. That is not going to go away. But I need to find a way to make sure I'm back on track. Now, I will explain a bit more, a little bit more in a minute, but I just want to make sure we are not losing track of this. When it comes to the Dasan, because the question was, are, is there any other form? The answer is bluntly, no. The form, I have to tell you this in no uncertain terms. The form of any practice in our Tariqah is decided by the Imam of the time based on the essence of our faith. And it is only the Imam of the time who maintains, who is and has the essence. And he decides according to his desire and his wish, according to the time, according to the circumstances, when the form should change or not. None of us, absolutely no one, has the power and authority to change any form of the practice. That form can on, that, that decision rather, can only come from the Imam of the time. So, and you know how that applies. It's across the board. This, it isn't like there is a negotiable part here. It's not negotiable. And we must be strong in that knowledge. So now the fact that Dasan has to take the form that it has today because that is in the Quran and that is in all the scriptures of the world. This is not a unique thing in the Ismaili expression of the foundation of the faith, namely with Dasan. What one must do is exactly as it is said in these verses of the Quran as interpreted in our own Tariqah practices. And what is that? In our own Tariqah practices, look at for example, in our holy Dua. It says, at the time of difficulty, seek the help of the living Imam. Are you seeking that help? We could take the whole session today speaking about that. But let me give you some points of contact. One of the Ferman's that I'd like to always put before the listener when they have such question is to basically say that do not forget the guidance that our beloved Imam gives us in all of these respects. And you have to take it seriously. You have to take it sincerely. And you have to take it with conviction of faith. Now, the individual who asked that question says, I have faith. I do my Ibadah. I'm, I have conviction in the practice of the faith. But my only difficulty is I don't have an income and I don't have income coming in. So I'm not able to give my Dasan in the form of an income. But the form is in income. So I really cannot in my way tell you that, well, you know what, there are other ways. There are not. And let, and let's not haggle about it, even though you may in your own logic and mind find some resistance, but don't because this is a clear thing. What is essential is to find a solution. And what is the solution? So one solution the Imam has given in a Ferman, that it, that is a Ferman he made in the United States, in San Antonio, Texas, uh, during the, I forget the date, uh, uh, yes, I have the Ferman near somewhere, just, having, yes. So let me read it to you. That was on April thirteenth, two thousand and eight. So that was during the period of the Golden Jubilee. Now look, look at every word of the Imam, okay? If this individual who asked this question seeks to overcome these difficulties, then, and if you are seeking divine help, then this is how it comes. Not only in this case, but in all cases. Our beloved Imam says, and I quote, keep your Tasbih with you and call on the Tasbih when you feel you need support. You need courage. You need to seek wisdom. You need to seek enlightenment in the issues that you have to deal with every day, unquote. Support, courage, wisdom, enlightenment. Is there anything missing? I would tell this individual in our Tariqah, supplicate, put your prayers before Mola. Because in our Dua, he says, seek the help of the Imam. And here is the Imam saying, call on the Tasbih. So are you looking for support to overcome that? So you have income coming in? Are you looking for courage to go through this difficult period? Are you looking for wisdom to deal with it in accordance to the practice of our Tariqah? And are you seeking enlightenment so that you are not thrown out of the rails by such difficulties that may exist? If that being so, then the position our Tariqah gives is very clear. Seek help from the Imam of the time at the time of difficulty. And remember the fifth part of our Dua, what it says. I would say to you, read, read the Dua. Understand the Dua. Use the Dua as a platform of your supplication and follow the Imam's guidance in terms of getting support, courage, wisdom and an enlightenment. Call on the Tasbih. Did you hear the word of the Imam? Call on the Tasbih. Who are you calling? In other Ferman's, call the name of Allah. Call the name of the Imams. Call the name of the Imam of the time. Now how difficult is this? You take your Tasbih and you call the name of Mola on it. Do you know in some other Ferman, well, in this one here, the Imam says, call the name of the Imams. Okay, open your Dua book and make that Ni'at in your heart, call the name of the Imams. It's there in the Dua book. Do you know how magical is our Dua? When you say in the Dua, have you really read the meaning of what this part of Dua says? There is nothing in this universe Mola Ali cannot do. There is nothing in this hall of this creation that Imam cannot do. Because in that part of the Dua, in the fifth part, we are saying, Inna Kala Qulishen Qadir, Ya Ali Ya Muhammed, Ya Muhammed Ya Ali. Has the Imam not said, call on the Tasbih, the name of Azrat Ali, the name of the Holy Prophet? Did he not say that? And it said, Inna Kala Qulishen Qadir. You have power over all things in creation. So now we have some homework to do. You know, once I quoted this, this beautiful quotation, I forget where it came from, but someone sent it to me and blessing to that person. It says, do you know, do you know what is the distance between a problem and a solution? So here's a problem. And for every problem, there is a solution. And this is what we are seeking. Do you know what is the distance between a problem and a solution? It is the distance between your knees and the floor. You understand the saying? It's a saying that says, when you have difficulty in life, be humble. Be humble. Go to Mola. Go to Mola with that humility. You don't have to demonstrate to the public. Do it in your home, in the privacy of your room. Go to Mola in humility. Supplicate to Mola from your heart. Tell Mola what problem you have. Yes, he knows them all. But it's your responsibility to articulate them. Remember what I said in the beginning when the Ginnan was recited? How do you supplicate him? How do you go to him in such a way so that Mola may be so pleased listening to your supplication, he'll say, I grant you whatever your wishes are. Isn't that what we want?
But Hassan?
Yes.
Do you think we should move to the next?
I'm just finishing. Thank you. Sorry, I have a tendency to, uh, get carried away. And I know it's a question and answer session. We'll take as many questions as possible. So I thank Bushel for nudging me and she should if I am overextending. So make your supplication to the Imam based on the principles that our Tariqah expresses. And remember the greatest blessing our beloved Imam gave during the Diamond Jubilee. What did he say? May all your problems disappear as if they never existed. So I would say to this individual, if you have faith, you have conviction, you do your Ibadah, you do your prayers, remember this is a command of the Imam that he has intervened in our difficulties. And supplicate the Imam to restore your Dasan in the way it is expected to be performed in the Tariqah. The next question, please.
Amin. So this next question is, uh, is, is... So this next question is, uh, it starts off because it's taking on from a previous thing, I think that you may have said in, in, in your, in your lecture, but it's saying that if you do not, I think that you may have said that your faith is, isn't strengthened or is lessened if you do not pay your dasan. So this person, I disagree to some extent. I don't believe people's faith and good intentions amount and personal relationship with Allah is purely determined by dasan alone. People who are in no shape to give financial dasan but can give time and voluntary service, their faith is destroyed surely?
It's a very good question, and again, a very emotional question. In some ways, uh, I stand to be corrected in utmost humility. I said, "In some way, it is almost like the question says, you know what? If I don't want to fulfill my obligation of dasan in a monetary form, then you know what? I should be allowed to fulfill my dasan in some other form like service and this and this and that." Look, I cannot come in between that. Whatever your faith is, is your faith. Whatever your conviction is, is your conviction. What is my task? My task is to articulate the principles in front of you. And that principle is abundantly clear by the Holy Imam in the Quran, in the Ginnans. And in the Ginnans, it says, "Dasan vina nahichutu." To put it in plain, simple English, there is no way out of the dasan. It's there to stay. Now, again, in utmost humility, it's not I who decides whether you think there'll be punishment, whether you think there'll be retribution, whether you think there'll be this or that. It's up to you to understand the knowledge. It's up to you to assimilate and to see within your own logic and thinking, within your own intellect, to figure out and say, what is it our beloved Imam and our faith asks us to do? Now, if you decide for yourself that you have decided, and I want to underline the word "you," you as an individual, you have decided you want to take another path that is entirely your freedom, it's between you and Moulana. No one can come in between that. But if you are seeking clarification as to what the faith requires, then the faith is exceedingly and abundantly clear. It has nothing to do with the notion of punishment. It has to do with the notion of fulfilling one's foundational duties, which are indeed compulsory. Last comment. Our beloved Imams, and I'm referring to Imam Muhammad al-Baqir, alaihissalam, fourth Imam, and our fifth Imam, Imam Jafr Sadiq, alaihissalam, and this is quoted by the great Fatimi jurist Kazim Aman into his magisterial text, legal text of jurisprudence called Daim al-Isra, meaning the pillars of Islam. In those texts, he mentions that the Holy Imam, in regards to matters concerning the dasan, says, "There is no greater test imposed upon the human being than the return of the amanat, meaning the dasan, into the hands of God." Are you following me? If you read the whole of the Quran, there is no greater test than the return of the amanat. That is the greatest test that a human being has to make sure that the dasan that belongs to God is returned to God. Next question.
Why are we born Ismailis and others non? Do they get the same privileges of being one with Noor? I know we have a living Imam.
Excellent question. Look, I can't pretend to know, uh, why others are not born into our faith. It's one of the mysteries of the Creator. But let me tell you, we are not without the response. And sometimes it requires a little spiritual maturity to understand the response. And the response is based on the fact that where was the soul before it was given the blessing to be born into this path that we call the Ismaili subthan, into the Ismaili path of Noor? So that that soul in coming into this faith and by following the holy faramans of the Imam and living, living his or her life in accordance with the direction, the ethics, and being on the path of Noor, the Sirat al-Mustaqim, that that soul may eventually achieve salvation. Where was that soul before it came into this path? And why is it that other soul did not come into this path? Now, remember, it says in the Holy Quran, it says in the Quran, I have, I have it right here, so just let me read you that verse, because it is one which I know creates always great interest. And this is in, uh, chapter seventeen and, uh, verse, is it seventeen? Yeah. Anyway, let me just paraphrase it for you. And the verse basically says that, "Kul al ruh min amrabi." I quote it many times in my lectures, to mean, "The soul is by the command of God." Now, look at the question. Why isn't that person, meaning that soul, born into this faith? Or vice versa, so to speak? But based on the teachings of our faith, the soul is by the command of God. Well, having said that, that's one part of the answer. The other part of the answer is to see and to understand why the Imam calls us his beloved spiritual children. Spiritual children, children of his spirit. In other words, it is a status spiritually that the Imam has given us as his grace, blessing and mercy to be close to him as his spiritual children. And that was explained by Imam Sultan Omahcha, alaihissalam, in one of the farmas. And he says, "Just as in your physical body, there is a part of your mother and father in the same way in your soul, there is a part of our Noor, we say salam." And that makes us his spiritual children. It's a farma I'm quoting, I'm paraphrasing. Now, if I was to put all the points together, then in, in clearly responding to you to this question, first I would say that it is a grace, it is a mercy, it is a blessing. And our holy peers explain to us, after thousands and thousands and thousands of stages of spiritual evolution, spiritual evolution, the soul was evolved to such a level that it qualified to take birth into Ismaili subthan. So from this point on, that soul can cross the bridge of eternity and achieve eternal life. So everything is based on cycles and stages of growth. This is what nature is all about. And it includes, it includes spiritual growth and spiritual evolution. Now, we know notions about evolution from a physical anthropology point of view, how Darwinian science explains to us the notion of evolution from the three inherent principles of inheritance and selection of the fittest and so on. How is that a process in nature that allows species to exist and other species not to exist and to go from one stage of growth to another? The point is this, that in spiritual terms, as far as the soul is concerned, we don't have that control. The only thing we have control on that has been given to us in this context, remember what Imam Sultan Omahcha, alaihissalam, told us? Your faith, your deeds and your prayers. So what was your faith before? What was your deeds at that time? And what was your prayers, your ibadah? Did you qualify in all of these to make sure that you can be graced and blessed spiritually to take birth into Ismaili path so that you can achieve eventually what the purpose of our path is, as Imam has very abundantly said, to achieve salvation of our soul? It is indeed, the soul is by the command of the Lord. The spirit is commanded by the Lord. We cannot dictate that where our spirit is going to be born in order to achieve its final aim. That is a divine command. I hope the question is clarified enough. There are many other things I should say, which I'm not bringing it here, but I've already given you the clue, it is a spiritual evolution.
Thank you. The next question is, um, it says, "During the Karan period, K-A-R-A-N period, there was seventeen manifestations, but was there any other in between those seventeen?"
Yes. The thing is, uh, to give you a simple example, uh, when we speak about Moulana Ali, excuse me, when we speak about Moulana Murtaza Ali, alaihissalam, like our beloved first Imam, we say he is Moulana Ali. The same Moulana Ali is Moulana Hazar Imam, because it is the same Noor. The only difference is, if someone was to look at in retrospect and he says, "Well, were there, were there other Ali between the first and the forty-ninth Moulana Ali?" And of course, the fact that we are living this period and we know our history, we will readily admit, there have been forty-nine Moulana Ali since Moulana Murtaza Ali, the first revealed Imam during the time of the Holy Prophet, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. So we can kind of make that meaning and we can understand what we mean to say that. All the Imams were Moulana Ali. That's why we say, "Ya Ali ya Hazar Imam, ya Ali ya Noor Maulana shakrim al ussaini Hazir." We take the name of a beloved Imam by connecting him to Moulana Murtaza Ali and to connect him to the Noor because he is what he is. So exactly in that same way, the names of the in-between manifestation that came in that period of Karan was not give, was not given in the, in the details. The reason being that for number one, it would be too numerous, but our peers have summarized the whole theory of the holy and divine manifestation of the Noor into a concept that our holy peers, they call that patra. Now, the word patra, amongst other nuances, the word patra means like a container. It's just like if I show you this glass and it say, "This glass contains water." So the word, the word patra means those who were the possessor of the Noor. And Holy Peer Sadrabill has written an amazing text and he calls it, "Sitotere patra," seventy-seven patras, meaning right from the time of that creation onwards, who were the, who were those beings who possessed that Noor? And they were the Noor of the time. So in the period that we known as the three Karan, there were seventeen patra that we call manifestation. Next question.
Question will be on intellect. And it says, "Dr. Hassem, how can we spiritually influence our subconscious? Through ibadah or continued remembrance?"
Now, the, the question about influencing the subconscious is one that requires a greater understanding about the structure, how consciousness exists, and what exactly is it that we mean by the notion of the conscious mind and the subconscious mind? And I've said in my lecture, from duality to unity, I've explained, of course, that was a very brief, extremely brief lecture, because the concepts are so expanded, that the subconscious mind is only accessible when our awareness, our consciousness receives during, during the period we call sleep or the first phase, as you know, is the waking state. And then it is immediately we go into the dreams, the dream state. Now, in the dream state is where the subconscious, meaning that part, let me be very clear, the part of our mind that is not accessible to the waking consciousness, meaning when you're awake, that part of the mind that is accessible when we are awake, we call it the conscious mind. But the mind is built of many different parts. And I've mentioned it once or twice, that from a spiritual physiology point of view, the mind consists of sixteen parts and many subdivisions. So leaving that aside, the subconscious part of the mind is predominantly where all your other memories and your experiences of the past and of the waking life are stored. The difficulty with that part is that when you enter the subconscious mind, remember, there are two great powers that you have when you are awake that you lose. You can't have them when you're into that part of the mind. And that is the power of volition, exercising your will and that of decision-making. Those two, those two activities that require waking consciousness is not available to us when the mind, when the consciousness rather, our awareness receives into the subconscious part of our mind. And then, of course, we go to the dreamless state after that, and then we come back again, and then eventually we wake up again. Now, the question was, can we influence? So in order to influence, you need the power of the will, that's not available. And the power of decision-making, that's not available either. So in that sense of the term, no. You can't influence your subconscious mind because it is exactly there, it is below the level of your conscious mind, it is that the other part of the mind within which you have no access. within which you have no access. There was another part to this question, Gurshan, it says influencing the subconscious and?
Through ibadat or continued remembrance?
Oh, yes, yeah. Now, that's a great point. There is an aspect of it that is not something that ordinarily people can do. If a person succeeds in ibadat, they can, they can do things with, to circumvent that loss of control. It means that when a person achieves a certain level of spiritual growth, he or she is able to separate the subtle body from the physical body. So, the physical body that, which is one of the three bodies that the soul has, the soul has three bodies, physical body, subtle body, causal body. Now, physical body, you know it so well, needless to say. I hope you know what it is, you know it well. But what about your subtle body? That subtle body is made up of those other parts of our consciousness that we call pranamayakosh, mannamayakosh and vijinanmayakosh. So, all the memories of our experiences in this life and of course, it encompasses the karmas and memories of the previous existences we've had, it's all stored in the memory of the subtle body. So, those who have been blessed with this understanding and they can shift. Remember I say, you receive, your awareness, your consciousness receives. So, you can transfer your consciousness from the physical body when that physical body goes to sleep and that consciousness is transferred into the subtle body. And when the consciousness is in the subtle body, what happens? You are able to see your physical body sleeping in bed, wrapped up in this blanket and so on. And you come to realize that was just your physical makeup of your physical covering. But, and right now, you are outside your body and you can see your physical body, but you are onto this other body that we call the subtle body, which is made, as I mentioned before, of the finest matter in creation, physical matter, but not physical in the way that we know it. It is made of such a fine structure that it actually becomes like a template into your physical body. Just like when you have water that goes into a sponge, in the same way that subtle body goes into your physical body. But during sleep, when consciousness receives inwards, that subtle body separates. Now, everyone has that experience, but most people don't remember it at all. But the ones who have been blessed with, to receive that ability, their consciousness receives into that subtle body and then into that subtle body, yes, they have access to the subconscious and to know why the activities of the subconscious eventually manifest and erupts into the conscious mind when we are living, when we are living into the conscious phase of our existence. So, that is a possibility. But it is a blessing and a grace through ibadat. Or for those who have been blessed from a previous life, from a previous life, they come, they are born with such amazing spiritual capacity and you know who say that? Imam Sultan Muhammad Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam say that. Read in the memoirs, I don't think near me here, but I would have read you that paragraph, that those who are born with such amazing spiritual capacities, so I'm just using that as a way of an explanation to say, they are capable to do that.
So, the next question. It says, Yalim, Dr. Hasam, just wondering if you can discuss the significance of Eid al-azhar, which is coming up, which we will, we will be observing at the end of the month?
I know this question was raised before, so I remembered it. And I was digging into something today that I hope will please you because I like to give references from our beloved Imam, from our, from our tarita, so we understand what it is. So, you know, after the period of Ramzan, after the period of fasting, we have one Eid that we call Eidul Fitrah. And that Eid is the breaking of the fast. And you know what the word Eid means, right? We use it in many different ways and basically Eid means, it's a celebration. It's a celebration, to celebrate an achievement, to celebrate something which we did or we were blessed with. And in retrospect of that blessing and, and performing of one's duties, we are blessed with a celebration that we call Eid. Now, you already know about the notion of fasting in many different ways, but simply for those who may be curious with a little bit more, more, more different facets, you know, there is the fast of, I'm talking about Eidul Fitrah right now. So, there is the fast of the outer self. There is the fast of the inner self with which we abide. In other words, we fast, but it's the fast of the inner self. We call Batini Roja, Batini Roja. We have in fact a whole ghnan related to the fast of the inner self. We have a description by Imam Mustalcribila alayhi salam in the Holy Pandiyati Javan Marvi about the fast of the inner self. And then there are other forms of fast that we see that are mentioned in the Quran. There is the fast of the tongue. In other words, people sometime, and it is a fast that is there when we see even some prophets kept it, that the fast of not speaking, of not uttering a word for forty days, not thirty, forty days. And it's often known as Vaktika. And then there is the fast, Ibn al-Arabi sometimes speaks about the fast of the heart. It's an amazing understanding to know what that is. So, that is part of the Eidul Fitrah. And in a, in a sense, it's part of the month of Ramzan, but it culminates with breaking of that fast by having that celebration. And then, following that period, there is the fast known as, sorry, there is the Eid known as Eidul Azha. In some tradition, they call it Eidul Zohar. In the subcontinent, they call it Bakri Eid or Bakra Eid. Why? Because it is the Eid whereby they, they sacrifice a goat. That's why they say Bakri Eid. The bakra is the goat and you sacrifice that goat. All in remembrance of the historical event that happened to Prophet Abraham Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam when he was ordered, when he was ordered to go ahead and sacrifice his most beloved possession, which was Hazrat Ismail. And the miracle was that when, when he was ordered by divine will to perform the sacrifice, the miracle of God was, it turned out to be the goat. It was not the real son, his son Hazrat Ismail. Remember, he had two sons. Hazrat Isik that came first and then Hazrat Ismail. So, I know there are many pieces there of the history, I'm just giving you just this pointers. Now, what does that to do with the notion of the sacrifice today? Certainly, it is a remembrance of that event in history. Now, the Quran says that following that, following that test on Prophet Abraham, he was raised to the position of Imam. He was a prophet already, but he was raised to the position of Imam. And then there is this whole theology behind how the holy Imamah goes into the purest of the family and his descendants from the time of Prophet Abraham. Now, today, when we celebrate Eidul Zohar, we are celebrating, to put it very simply without going into all the intricate details and I'm going to read you something in a minute, we are celebrating the notion of the recognition of the Imam by virtue of having offered ourself in sacrifice to receive that knowledge, that conviction, that blessing of recognition. And you know, our beloved fifth Imam, before I go into that, this notion of sacrifice in Eidul Zohar, in Eidul Azha, excuse me, is the Eid part, this celebration part, what is that? It's not simply gathering, being together, eating the goat that we have sacrificed or in its multi-dimensional way of sacrificial celebration and so on. That is the physical part and that's okay. But that is short-lived, it's done and then it's over. The notion of Eid in our Ismaili tarita is highly spiritual and esoteric. It means it is celebrated, but it never ends. When the soul achieves, when the soul is given through the intellect, the recognition, the knowledge about the recognition of the Imam, just as Prophet Abraham was promoted from being a prophet to the Imam, that expression of recognition becomes what? The ecstasy for the soul. The soul becomes in such an ecstatic state that it celebrates spiritually. This is Eidul Zohar or Eidul Azha, for the more eat, for the more means, for those who are into the path of Noor, to know, to know this is an amazing gift given to us of realization historically and continues to be because it is historically the testification of the continuation of the Noor of Imamah. Of course, it was there, but this particular event where Prophet Abraham is the common patriarch of Judaism and Christianity and of course Islam is very significant. So, now, let me just read something to you. This is, this is from the sacred prayers of Imam Zenul Abdin alayhi salam, our beloved third Imam, in this amazing text that is known as Al Sahifak Al Sahidiya. Now, I don't think we have time to read the whole prayer. The whole prayer is like eight pages, eight full-time pages. Let me just show you so you have an idea. Can you see that? So, there are eight full pages like these ones. And it's very long indeed, okay? So, but I've selected just that one paragraph to give you the taste. So, it says, so Imam, remember, this is in Imam Zenul Abdin teaching us how we pray on this particular occasion. So, in the twelfth section of this prayer, Imam Zenul Abdin says, teaching us, oh, listen carefully, O God, and make me one of the people who profess thy unity, have faith in thee and attest to thy messenger and thee Imams towards whom thou hast enjoined obedience. This is Eidul Azha, this is Eidul Zohar, this is Bakri Eid. This is the ultimate sacrifice that you do intellectually to recognize this unity. Remember I keep mentioning, unity, one, there is one absolute reality Hakika and that's the Marifat of Vichima. I'll stop here for this one.
Okay, well, this is a good, this is a good place to have an exit place. But before we have that exit, I would like to request you to give the water to everybody. I'm going to have everybody remain muted, but please, everyone, please say Amin in your hearts and in your homes and loudly I will say Amin on behalf of everybody present. Bismillah.
Thank you, Gurshan. I would like to first of all, thank Gurshan for hosting and being the facilitator tonight and sharing by recite the ghnan. And to thank you all for your time, for your participation, for your support, for your feedback, for your prayers and for your brotherliness and sisterliness for everything that you are doing to uphold the love and affection and knowledge for our holy tarita. And let us pray. May Maula bless you with good health.
Amin.
Maula bless you with Barakaat.
Amin.
Spiritual Barakaat and material Barakaat.
Amin.
May Maula's hand be upon you to guide you, to protect you.
Amin.
To keep you safe.
Amin.
Maula Bapa be with you every step, every breath of the way.
Amin.
Whatever your wishes are, may Maula Bapa fulfill it.
Amin.
May Maula Bapa increase all of us in the Hakika knowledge.
Amin.
May Maula bless us with success in our prayers.
Amin.
With success in our ibadat.
Amin.
May Maula make us conscious and aware twenty-four seven of his holy and merciful presence in our hearts, in our thoughts, in our intellect.
Amin.
In our soul.
Amin.
And may Maula bestow upon us the amazing, amazing gift of gratitude that we may express Shukranah to our beloved Imam. Every single breath that we exist in, that be a breath of Shukranah.
Amin.
And may Maula reward us infinitely with his spiritual gifts and the material blessings as he wishes and as he desires and may all of us be blessed with the Zahiri and Batini Dida of our beloved Imam. Amin.
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 Thank, thank you, Dr. Hasam. What, this, this, for everybody present, is this, is the place that you would like to leave? This would be a good point to, to leave because this is the formal end to this session. As I had mentioned previously, Dr. Hasam has very graciously agreed to continue for another twenty to thirty minutes. And so whoever wants to stay, please stay, the chat line will be open. So, if you want to post some questions there, please feel free to do so. I'm not sure they will be done today because we already have a number. But we do collate them and use them as time goes by. So, with that, I am going to open up the chat. And shall we go on to the next question, Dr. Hasam?
Yes, please, there is some more there.
So, if, if it's okay with you, we will go back to the, the place where we stopped before, you know, before we did Eid, we were talking about the intellect and we talked about spiritually influencing our subconscious and ibadat. We, we were talking about the intellect, and we talked about spiritually influencing our subconscious and Ibadahs. So the next question in that line is, does our karma become known in our dream realm?
Uh, not in the dream realm, not in the dream realm, as I mentioned, that we kind of lose control there, because it's a totally emotional plane. Uh, emotion and imagination takes over when we enter that dream plane. So, uh, our karma don't become evident during that phase of our consciousness. But our karma can become evident to us when we raise, when we raise our level of awareness from the material body higher up. Then we can access the storehouse of our karma to know what is it that's prompting this life based on those karma.
The next question is along the same lines. Is there a way to make progress if one is in a coma?
Well, the state of coma is a very tricky one. And at least from what I understand, there are different phases that individuals may be in a coma. But generally speaking, when an individual is in the coma, he has totally receded away. In other words, his awareness and consciousness of his physical environment and of his own physical being as a, in, like a waking being, is not there. The reason it's called the coma, because we say he has lost consciousness. Now, that's from the outside point of view, an external point of view. But consciousness is still there, because conch, without that consciousness, the person would not be breathing. It is that consciousness that manifests itself through the physical that basically creates the notion of one person is breathing and alive. But in this particular case, uh, this individual has no awareness of his physical side. So his consciousness has receded into the inner recesses of his being and is no longer in connection with the outside. And various ways of measuring that, medically speaking, are there to indicate to us, sort of, the autonomic nervous system may be functioning, and other fun, other functions of the body may be there from an organ point of view. Uh, the heart may be beating, but there are certain anomalies discovered in the level of the brain. And if it is that kind of a coma. So, um, can one progress when you are in coma? No. There is another aspect, there is another aspect, uh, it's a sensitive one. Uh, it is said, it is said by mystics, and often we encounter that in mystical literature. It says, when a person goes into a state of coma, the person has been put into a state of accountability when he's in that state. A state of accountability. Now, it's possible, based on that information, a person is put into a state of accountability, meaning, when I say accountability, accounting one's deeds. Like when we have to render account at a time of death. But there are, uh, different manifestations of that. And that is, the person may be in a coma for a few weeks to a few years, a few years. And, uh, and after that time, a few weeks or a few years, the person may wake up. Consciousness comes back to the surface, and now he is part of his waking life. And for whatever life he has been given again, perhaps out of that accountability, it continues to live. Others, they go, they go to that accountability phase while they are still in the physical world at that particular level of their consciousness we call coma. And when that accountability is done, then they naturally exit the body, they exit this world. Now, I'm being deliberately brief, because, uh, there are lots of factors associated. Uh, I don't have the luxury of time to go into all the silly and details, but this is what is, it is there generally.
Okay. The next question is now on a different topic, we, uh, it's on Das of Taq. The person actually said, I would like to talk more about Thibor, but I believe that must, that must have been a typo. Um, so I think the question is, I would like to talk more about Das of Taq.
Yeah, that is actually a subject in itself, but I'd like to respond to this question. And, uh, uh, in responding to this question, uh, I was, excuse me, I was looking for a particular Ferman. Uh, but, uh, uh, I probably misplaced it, but I, I have requested, uh, uh, Alwais Badur Manji, uh, if you could, uh, find, uh, that particular Ferman. So, uh, would you be trying to unmute him, please, Gurshan? And, uh, Alwais Manji, are you, are you around there? Are you still around? It probably is, but it needs to be unmuted. Uh, it will take a minute or so before Gurshan unmutes him. Uh, but let me begin to respond in the meantime. That, you know, that the whole notion of the Das of Taq. Now, Das, as you know, means ten, and Avtar means the ten manifestation. The ten manifestation of the Nuh into this last, uh, great cycle of existence, which is divided basically into four minor cycles. So, um, I'll just give you a small, uh, summary. Uh, but because people have confusion into their mind, and when we speak about the concept of Avtars, immediately people jump to the notion of Hinduism or Buddhism, and they think, they think that when our holy peers compose the Ginnan called Das of Taq, and there were three peers who composed the Ginnan Das of Taq. Pirsadabin, Sayyidin Amsha, and Pirsangsh. Three peers, uh, in different ways, uh, compose, uh, the Ginnan, so that three Ginnan with that name. And there are empty mentions throughout the Ginnanic literature. But essentially, uh, what is?
Can I just stop you? I'm sorry, I, I don't think Alwais Saif is here. He was here before, but he's not here now.
Okay. All right, no problem. So, um, let me paraphrase the Ferman. I wanted you to hear the Ferman, but let me paraphrase. The Ferman of Imam Sultanumashal (alaikum sallam) says that, "Understand the philosophy of Das of Taq as during the time of Imam Islamsha (alaikum sallam), that holy Pirsadabin taught you what it is." And the Imam says, "What holy Pirsadabin taught you about the Das of Taq was they were the manifestation of the Nuh that came in time past." That Ferman of the Imam. So there, there's nothing Hinduistic about it. Let me see if I can share my screen and show you a slide. Yes. Can you all see this slide?
Yes.
Okay. So this is actually a slide that I found in my, my collection that I wanted to just show you. You see there are, there are the, if you can follow my cursor, it says, "The Das of Taq", a technical name, we say, it's the Divine Epiphany, we could, we could have also said Muzar. And we say, "Manifestation of the Holy Nuh." So keep your focus on the Holy Nuh. The Nuh has taken many different forms over time. And in the cycle that we call the cycle of the four Jukes, the Nuh has taken 10 different forms. That's why it's called Avtar. Now, Avtar does not necessarily mean, well, it does, but it's not limited to the, the simple word to say incarnation. It does, definitely they are. But the, the distinction is that it is an incarnation in the form of a descent. I hope you understand it. It is a descent. Normally, when a human soul incarnates, it is due to karmas. Your karma brings you back down, and you incarnate into a body, human or otherwise. But in the case of the Nuh, it is a descent. It is the Nuh that chooses. It wants to manifest itself. And so we call the Muzar, or we call that, uh, the Divine Epiphany, or we call that the Avtar. And because in Sanskrit, this is a matter of language, not culture or somebody else's tradition. In Sanskrit, we call it Avatar. That is, in this particular case, Nuh, the Nuh of Allah, the Nuh of other Imam that has taken these forms in various parts of the spiritual history of all the Jukes. And I'm only referring to the far, the four Jukes, that is, the last four period, and we are into the fourth one, which has existed, uh, uh, since, uh, the last 4,320,000 years. So I'll be very quick. So the, these three manifestation of the Nuh, Mach, Qora, Vara, they are technically known as teriomorphic manifestations. This is a, this is a word, it's a big word, I completely understand. Uh, it's a word that means what kind of manifestations they were. So you can imagine that, uh, if Mach represents fish, and Qora for some time, uh, in the Ginnan, it says Kach, meaning a tortoise, and Vara. Now, sometimes we translate the word Vara to means boar, but it is not a boar of today's species, it is a boar of that species of that time. Kind of difficult to conceptualize, but just for the purpose of explanation. So these were the three manifestations that we call teriomorphic. And in the first cycle of time, in the very first cycle of time, called the Golden Age, and in that Golden Age, there were four manifestations, the first three and the fourth. But the fourth manifestation, we call Mercy, half-man, half-lion, was not teriomorphic, was terio-anthropomorphic. So it was a different form, different physical form. And then, uh, the, the, the second age, which brought, which began after these four Avtars, was that of the Vaiman of Taq, the Fatsiram of Taq, and Ramchandra, or Sri Ram, or Maulana Ram. So these three manifestations, they were of the Tretajuk, and they were anthropomorphic. And in continuation, the, the, uh, in the third period, uh, known as the, the Duapu Juk, there were two manifestations, Krishna and Buddha, they were also anthropomorphic. So there were the eighth and the ninth manifestation. And then, in the last period of time, that we call Kaljuk, the world we are living in, was the tenth manifestation called Naklanki. It was also anthropomorphic. Now Naklanki of Taq, this is in, uh, in another language, Maula Ali. This is the manifestation of Hazrat Ali (alaikum sallam) during the time of the holy Prophet Muhammad (sallallahu alaihi wasallam). So, uh, you can see, if now, if you want to go back in reverse, when we mean anthropomorphic in this sense, that the Nuh was manifested. And from this period onwards, it was known as the Imamah. So he was the, you will often hear in the Ginnan, Dasmo Naklanki of Taq, Sitothermopatra, Hazrat Maulana, Murtaza Ali (sallallahu alaihi wasallam). So he was the 77th Partra, the 10th Naklanki of Taq, and the first manifest Imamah. So that's why Imam Sultanumashal said, "Don't confuse what others says about the Avtar." They have their own theory, they have their own explanation, they have their own everything about this concept. Our concept comes from the Nuh of the Peer. The holy Peer has given us the complete understanding of what these manifestations are and what these manifestations did, when did they exist, how did they exist, what did they do, why they came into the physical plane of existence, and so on and so forth. Now, this requires a, a, uh, uh, this requires a complete treatment, if you like, a complete exposition to show how the Nuh actually came. Now, remember earlier on, we talked about the Partra? Well, there you are. It started with the Partra, and then it went on all the way down from the periods of, the periods of the three Karan, the four Kalas, and then the four Jukes. And you find the common thread of the Nuh all across it, billions of years of human history, if you like, from the time of creation, and how this Nuh manifested. Because we are the path of Nuh, and the Nuh has always been there from the very beginning. I've explained that in my talk about the, uh, the purpose of the manifestation, when the talk was about, uh, the metacosmic purpose of creation. So, uh, when we think about Das of Taq in our Ismaili faith, it has nothing to do with the notion of Hinduism. This is what you call misguided people and people who have not read the Ginnans. They have not researched the Ginnans, they have not seen the authenticity of where it comes from. They mix and match their information in the way that is convenient for them to find the thread. You know, if somebody was to say to a Muslim, that, you know what, uh, whatever he said about Jesus and the, and Bibi Maryam, uh, uh, Holy Mary in the Holy Quran, uh, this was taken from the Christian people. Because in the Bible, there are similarities like that. Do you really think this was taken from the Bible, that what is in the Quran? Was the Quran not revealed, meaning it came as a revelation? So if it, it can't be both, right? It can't be something was revealed, and then you make an accusation to the Prophet, oh, you know what? Uh, this you took from the Christian Bible, and you put it into the Quran so that you could have this convenience of the Ali Al Kitab between the Jews and the Christians and the Muslims. And whatever pertains to the Jews and Judaism, which came from Moses, and there are hundreds of verses about Prophet Moses, Musanabi, oh, you took that from the Old Testament. Is that the fact? Is that how we honor our revelation of the Quran? To say, we have copied things, we have transplanted things, we have plagiarized things to make it fit the context of Islam? How insolent. How insolent. How very uninformed. How very disrespectful of Allah's revelation to say to the holy prophet that he did that. And you know, there were accusations like these in history during the time of the Prophet and after to say, oh, well, he seems to have taken that from the earlier revelations. No. Whatever came to the holy prophet, came as a revelation. It came from the new. He himself was a new. In the same way, in exactly the same way, the same new within which the Quran was revealed, that same new is inside the peers. That's why, like the name of the Imams, before we used to recite the names of the holy peers in our old Dua. Why? To acknowledge the fact that the presence of the Imam as Shah and the Nur Enebuwa as peer has always been present. And maybe a week from today, I'm going to be speaking on the concept of Pirata. At least one lecture, if not more. Perhaps the week, the lecture next Tuesday might be that. So I received many requests to continue explaining that. So I want to do that. And once and for all, for us to understand and bring before you this buried knowledge. This knowledge has been buried sometime deliberately and we must bring it out from the sources of our practice and say, here is what it says. Here is what our beloved Imam teaches us about the concept of peer and Shah with the concept of Ya Ali, Ya Muhammad. So the explanation of the concept of Dasavat in the Ginnan, including all our Ginnans, has come from the same divine new. That's why we recite them in Jamat Kana. That's why it's knowledge that leads into liberation, knowledge of the Hattikat and Marifat. So this explanation of Dasavat, and I've only given you one small thread, is the explanation based on the holy Farman of the Imam about the manifestation of the new.
I think Dr. Hassan, we just have time for one last question.
Okay.
And I'm having difficulty picking which question. So let's pick a fun one. And this one says, well, it's not fun, it's very interesting, but it says, is Covid nineteen a test or a punishment or an awakening or something else?
I think it's all of it. I think it's all of it. And people look at it in different ways. But you know, you can only validate something on the basis of, in our particular case, given that society has gone through this challenge and our Jamaat has gone through this challenge, my only answer is go back and reread the holy Talikas of the Imam in this period. And leave it at that. Whether it's a challenge, whether it's a test or whatever else it is, remember one thing. The most important thing, that we have the holy and divine protection of our beloved Imam with us. We have Maulabapa's hand, holy hand upon us. We have Maulabapa's blessing upon us. That Maulabapa has extended his intervention and has extended his divine protection upon us, his Jamaat. And in the context of that protection, he has given very specific instruction how we must behave and how we must conduct ourselves during this period. And I think that is known to the Jamaat as a whole. If not, please reread Maulabapa's Talika.
So that was, that was a very, very succinct. We, I think we could do one more one, if that's okay. So this one is on the intellect. And it says, what do you think that Maulabapa means when he says, although we are living in this world, our intellect is in another world?
Yes. I think the shortest way I can answer it that is fine is to say this. Just as I mentioned it in my explanation of the enhancing the intellect part one of that talk is to explain that the intellect itself is part of the spirit. It's part of the soul. What comes out of the soul as the radiance, that's the intellect. So while we live in this world physically, that radiance is translating itself as a reflection in the mirror of our mind, which we call our reason, our logic and so on. So while we live into this world, the intellect lives into the other world, which is the world of the spirit where our soul is. So that is perhaps the easiest way I can explain that. Because remember what I said in my talk, there are different understanding about this notion of the word. You can use the word intellect with a small i or intellect with a capital I. And we want to do both. We want to understand that intellect is a divine gift, as I mentioned, that enables us to achieve to the understanding, conviction and appreciation intellectually about the notion of ultimate reality, mono-reality or the notion of Tuhid. Tuhid, that's what the intellect is for. That you come to realize there is only but one absolute mono-reality Tuhid into this creation and that is the new. Nothing else. Everything else is, if you like, a multiplicity. We call that a duality. So there is only one absolute reality and that is what the intellect is designed for. And we can see this unity in the physical plane when that intellect is rightly illuminated or we can see that unity when that intellect is provoked spiritually, through spiritual practice and realizes its identity as a self-luminous self. Which means he who knows himself eventually comes to know this ultimate mono-reality, meaning the new, meaning God. So he who knows himself knows God. This is what Hazrat Ali Alayhi Salam said.
I think with that, we, it's time to close. So I would like to take this opportunity for humbly thanking you for, on behalf of everybody, for all your time and effort that you have taken to reach out to people all over the world and to give your knowledge to all of us. We pray for you and your family. Maula bala. Bati, kevaka bulte, sukris, amitne abadakeh.
Amin.
Kalama tiyape, das son sukris, abadate, kinarakeh.
Amin.
Sumanima balska, tihakikati, bati.
Amin.
Yevine bateni sunde kima, parakas, parakas, nasi kri.
Thank you, Gursen. May all those prayers come back to you too and your family. Thank you always for your help for facilitating the process and for being there, not only just for me, but for all of us. Maula bless you with Ba'athani and Zaheri Vida and fulfill all your wishes and parakas from all of us. And to everyone else, Maula bless you. Have an early morning, if you are in that part of the world. A blessed morning. Have a good night and please don't miss your early morning prayers. Ya Ali Madha to everyone and Insha Allah, we will be continuing in the near future with other presentations. Maula bless you all. Ya Ali Madha.
Thank you. Ya Ali Madha.
Ya Ali Madha.